For the Indian City Council, Indian Water Authority. Today's date at 5:00 PM. Ask for a roll call, please.
Council Board Member Lane Holmes.
President.
Council Board Member Glenn Miller.
President.
Council Board Member Lupi Ramos Watson.
Present.
Mayor Protem, Vice President Sam Torres.
President.
Mayor-President Michael Wilson.
Present. Please stand with me for invocation. And Ms. Lupi Ramos Watson, would you handle the pledge for us today? Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, good evening, Council. As far as his father in heaven, we thank you for your presence and we ask that you would come in a special way this day that you have made. And Lord be with us, God be with our council, be with our mayor, be with our city officials, be with our chief, our police, our fire chief. God, all the city officials gathered here together. Master, we pray for your presence. We dedicate this meeting unto you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please try and make that place name your hand over your heart as we pay homage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moved to item one, report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. For this evening's, this afternoon's closed session, there were two closed-session agendas posted. One for the joint meeting of the City Council and Indian Housing Authority. There were eight items on the posted agenda we announced at the beginning of the session. The record should reflect that as to item eight, Councilmember Ramos Watson abstained, left the room, took no part in any discussion, and there were no reportable actions taken on any of the items on that agenda. There was also a notice of special meeting posted for a closed session of the City Council relating to a conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 5495-6.9(c) for one potential case. All council members were present in that discussion, and in that discussion, the council voted unanimously to authorize the city prosecutor to file a motion to intervene in Stabilist Fund II LLC versus Kuara, K-U-A-R-A, et al., Riverside County Superior Court, case number INC. 1303669, and that is a receivership matter relating to the Vintage Palms Apartments.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I would like to introduce and welcome our COD classmates with us today and their introduction to government class. Welcome and hope you learned something from watching us go through this process today. Move on to City Council reports on external/internal commission meetings and information. Councilmember Holmes?
Okay, I have two things. The first is the C-VEP workforce excellence. I wanted to discuss with you or give you the point that the C-VEP pathways to success and partnership with 24 matching partners will award more than $1.5 million in scholarships to 300 local students. That's significant, that's substantial, and that's really clearly the linkage between education and jobs. Before each of the council members, and this was sent out in the newspaper, is a magazine called Thrive. This is the first publication of its kind, and it really talks about all the benefits that C-VEP does for the community, specifically with respect to education and linking it to jobs and to next generation, the next generation that will allow us to have careers, give the opportunities to our students and our kids to have meaningful careers. On page 30 and 31, it goes into a lot of detail about education and business lead to the next generation of college and dream jobs. Very important that we not only provide the opportunity for our kids to be educated here, but after the education process, we need to be able to provide the careers for them to move into. So that's really the focus of C-VEP, and it's just really great to watch it all come together with our individual partnerships. The other, the other committee meeting I had was the Animal Campus Commission. Couple of things came out of that meeting, and I guess one of the good things is for all the tickets that are violations that have been given out, many people have multiple animals, multiple dogs, and the county has said, all right, we can give, you know, each dog, if you have four dogs, for instance, you know, a month to get them spayed, neutered, licensed, et cetera. So that, that helps the individual that has more than one dog. But I will ask, I wonder if there's a different approach now that we are a year out of this? When you look at the administrative citations that are, that are given, they are daunting. In our environment where many people in our community see a stray dog, they feed it, and pretty soon you have one, two, three dogs, to receive an administrative citation, not just for licensing, but all of a sudden you end up with spay, neuter, and you end up with these large bills, and we've talked about this in the past, and we've made strides. I'm just suggesting that there are further and additional steps that we can make. I think it's kind of daunting, and I'm wondering if instead of being in a reactive mode, if there is a more proactive way of approaching this, instead of, instead of handing someone a violation of $800 or $1,000, I wonder if we can perhaps cite them for the, the dog licensing, but maybe provide them with an informational component with respect to spay, neuter, just a different approach. Right now, the other concern that I have, that I realized, is that the licensing application is not available in Spanish. I mean, again, I think we've come a long way. I think there's more steps that we can take to make the process easier, not suggesting amnesty, but I would like to see us be more proactive in our approach to working with our community rather than going with these harsh administrative citations. And that would be my thought and my suggestion. Definitely need to see the licensing bilingual format. That's the end of my, my report and my meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Holmes, I just forwarded an email on those exact issues to the city manager earlier today and asked him to try to intervene on the Spanish-speaking documents and forms and those types of things, as well as another couple of items on there.
Thank you.
Even if we have to translate them ourselves.
Absolutely.
We will assist in that effort.
Again, I, we've made strides, and I don't, I don't want to make that any smaller. It really has. I think the county has worked very hard with us and made substantial strides in this effort and this process.
Sure. Thank you. Councilmember Ramos Watson?
Oh, thank you. I don't, I don't remember how long we've been with the county animal services.
Almost a year.
Okay, I think it's right about time that maybe we could, we don't need to have an oral presentation, but if we could have some information as to how many citations have been issued, you know, what that, what the statistics are in the first year, so we can have a better understanding.
How many licensed pets, all those.
What's going on.
Data.
Because, you know, we hear from the community these concerns, but I really don't know the magnitude of the concern. Is it, is it citywide? Is it a small population? So I think it'd be nice to have a little bit of a, a report on that.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah. Jason, bring that back. Okay.
Okay. And then Imperial Irrigation District Energy Consumers Committee, we had our general meeting getting ready for the annual budget for Imperial Irrigation District. We reviewed some of the infrastructure improvements that are going to be moving forward now that Imperial Irrigation is making plans to increase its capacity as far as being a balancing authority for Southern California. They too are going to consider a Salt and Sea Restoration Plan Resolution, such as was considered by the Southern California Association of Governments and the Coachella Valley Association of Governments, and on our very agenda this evening. So it seems like we're all walking to the same beat here, and we're all going to be moving that effort forward at the state and federal level. So that's a positive move coming out of that committee. And all my other committees didn't meet. I just wanted to report that I attended along with my colleagues the annual Aqua Conference for Water. We have to report back after the conference.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure when our next water meeting is. Very informative. We all went out to different breakout sessions. I personally participated in the breakout sessions that had to do with water and energy and the nexus between those two. You know, everyone's talking right now about the drought in the state of California, but no one's really talking about the impact it's going to have on our energy, which is all the hydro plants and, and how water connects with all of our energy needs. So it was very interesting, very informative. I appreciated the opportunity to be involved in that educational forum. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Just a couple of items, as also, as my colleague, I went to the Aqua Conference also. I was more into the drought and conservation issues that were there, along with the need and the storage for the bonding that the governor has, $11.5 billion at this point that he's looking at moving forward to look at some of our water issues throughout the state and is thinking about putting that on this next ballot in November. He did have a representative there from the governor's office that handles his issues with the water, so it was interesting to hear his thought on it, but there's a lot needed to be done, not only in conservation, but also in planning, storage, and also different kinds of domesticated water that from everything, from tertiary water being redone to different kinds of water for large areas. So I'll let the rest of it go to you, President Wilson, since you were the mainstay there. The other thing it is RCTC, which is Riverside County Transportation Commission. I sit on not only the Transportation Commission as a whole, but also the Rail Subcommittee and the local East Valley Correlation of projects that happen in the Coachella Valley. It's the representatives from each of our local cities, from Blythe into the Coachella Valley. And one of the things we did talk about and approve besides the RCTC budget, which was a little under $1 billion this year for transportation needs through the Coachella Valley and Riverside County, but we've talked about the new San Jacinto-Cochella Valley Rail Line, which was approved, and I give this to my colleagues, you can pass it back around. I do only have a few extra because they were given to me from over there, so I'll give this to our clerk if she'd like to put it come up below on it. And just kind of gives you the idea, we're looking at bringing rail transportation, pretty much like MetroLink, into the Coachella Valley with a couple of stops that still haven't been determined, a 12-month study, a fast-track 12-month study on bringing rail into the Coachella Valley, with the last station being here and at this present time in Indio, possibly having one in Rancher Mirage by the Aba Caliente interchange there over by Ramon Road, another one where the station is in Palm Springs, and then going into Riverside, so there you could take the MetroLink and that across the, the rest of the state. And it basically has some information on it, and it shows you the routes, the routes that are presently doing, and also the new rail passenger system that the governor's pushing for the high-speed rail that you talked about is basically the major spur. But one of the things was brought forward on it was a picture of this, which is a hydrogen cell train, which could be built in Riverside County. That's where all our hydrogen cell buses are made, very clean, very energy efficient, very quick, could be built locally, that can handle up to about 100, 150 passengers at a time, and it's small enough where it could go in and out of the two tracks that we have basically here on the properties that just north of us, that goes through the whole valley going all the way to Phoenix and utilizing spurs to go in and out so that the train can get up to the points very quickly. So we're hoping that with the 12-month study coming back, that we might be able to get AQMD and some other organizations like Amtrak and the EPA to invest in a hydrogen cell, like we have the buses for Sunline, in the train system itself. So that's very exciting news. The study was approved. It's a $1.8 million study, which was approved yesterday from the RTCC, so you will see some kind of forefront coming forward with possible ideas on rail service to the Coachella Valley. So with that is my report on my two committees. The other thing, as I was very fortunate and very honored to go to the Ophelia Project, which is a mentoring group of ladies in this valley, throughout the valley, that take high school students and mentor them on everything from how to act, how to properly do all kinds of schoolwork, to get ready for college, and then mentor them to get ready to go. Lupi Ramos Watson was there, our very own Dan Martinez, who is a board member there, was the emcee, and I think it was very moving. And if you've never seen the Ophelia Project, it is now throughout the whole Coachella Valley, helping youth, seniors, and, and high school students from one side of the valley to the next. A great organization. I look at it, and I'm sure Mr. Martinez was very moved, almost tears a couple times, but hearing those stories and seeing what they've come through and what they've done was excellent, and you did an excellent job. My hat is off to you, sir.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. I understand they're expand, possibly expanding and going larger with the Ophelia?
Yes, they, we've already actually expanded into the East Valley with Coachella Valley Unified School District, and the Palm Springs Unified School District is also part of it.
Outstanding.
So it's, it's valley-wide now.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mayor Protem Torres?
Yeah, you know, picking up on the theme about our animal control services, you know, I have a real concern. I'm probably a little bit more outspoken in my view regarding the, the application of our contract with the county. I, I feel that our, the, the county in its enforcement of animal control has unfairly targeted people of low income and also are discriminatory in their practice in that the fact that they cannot, and they do not go into every single neighborhood to check for these violations. And my feeling is until you can enforce the rule or the law in, in every community, in every neighborhood, then it shouldn't be implemented selectively in just some neighborhoods. So I'm looking forward to reviewing this contract and putting, putting some heat on the county. I feel that if we would have handled our, our budget tiered water rates, the increases that we just passed on to the community here this last year, if we would have rolled out our water rates the way the county has implemented their citations and enforcement of the animal control services, all five of us would be recalled right now, and Mr. Martinez would be looking for a job. This is how serious the handling, the mishandling, I think, of animal control services and the citations has, has occurred. And I use that stronger language only because we've been talking about it for nine months, and I've seen no, no credible response from the county other than basically just deal with it. So I'm glad that all my colleagues are wanting to review this. I hope that we take the appropriate actions to make the, the county more responsible, because in the bottom line, and in the end, is the community doesn't look at the county animal control service, they look at the city of Indio, because we are the ones who put the, the contract. We are the ones who engage them to carry out this responsibility for us. And just like if we had contracted with the sheriff's department, people wouldn't be bombarding Stan Smith, they would be bombarding the city of Indio for its agreement to enter into these types of contracts for these services. I also had my, the vector control, mosquito vector control meeting this last Tuesday, and we were all very excited about the fact that we are developing our own laboratory in order to examine and analyze infected birds and, and other carriers such as mosquitoes. We felt very strongly that being able to turn, shave off five to six days of turnaround to find out what the status of infection in the valley is was a very important health matter, therefore we spent nearly $2 million to develop, to build this new lab. Unfortunately, problems with the contractors has extended that out. We haven't been able to open it, but it looks like we're going to be resolving those issues soon, so that we will be open not only to do the analysis for our own valley, but also to offer those services to surrounding districts who might want to take advantage of our lab and our, our ability to turn around information more quickly, thereby assuring the public's health. Also, I had a Public Safety Commission meeting for the C-VAG. Our own Officer Steve Oring, Chief, is it Steve?
Yes.
His first name's Steve, yes. Detective, excuse me, Detective Steve Oring did a presentation, and what I really appreciate about his presentation is, when you do these kinds of presentations, you don't usually have your 30 minutes or 45 minutes. He did it very concise in the 10 to 12 minutes, but it was very pertinent information. I can tell from my committee members that it was very well received, and it was, it was valuable information. And I'm really proud of the police department for taking the lead on the copper wire and the metal theft issue and the task force here in the county. So that was a very wonderful job. Also, we all did attend the Monterey Conference for Aqua. As my colleague said, a lot of, a lot of discussion, just the, the idea of the, of the $9 to $11 million water bond that's going to be sold. One of the themes that I took away from that, this conference, was the fact is, is that we need long-term planning. We can no longer plan election cycle to election cycle and try to just appease whatever the political whim of the, of the community is, even the voter. What we need is 30 to 4-year planning. We need to look at our infrastructure and start investing in it now, because 10 years from now, five years from now, it's too late. The other thing that we find out is the way we've been storing in our capacity for, for surface storage facilities, while it fills an important need for hydroelectric, as Ms. Ramos had mentioned, and there's definitely a benefit there, what we've been looking, overlooking for decades now is the fact is that we have tremendous storage capacity in the groundwater, in the ground, I should say, and that if we start investing in, in recharging our ground basins, that we're going to, it's going to cost us less, there's a lot fewer environmental hurdles to go through. You can imagine when you dam up a river or a canyon, law, I mean, it takes 20 years to get all, all your certificates and permits. We don't, it's not the case for groundwater storage. Obviously, the Coachella Valley is all of our water primarily, is taken from groundwater sources. So the fact that they're discussing this right now and about recharging and storing water in, in the ground is a, is of great interest to us, because that's where we get our water. But also, I think that we've been able to show some good management practices. There's a major concern a lot of us have that as a state starts to implement rules for groundwater replenishment and drafting and monitoring and those types of things, what's going to happen is, it normally happens, is the local control gets taken away from districts, especially ones like ours, who do do a good job, and it's going to be placed up in Sacramento, and we're going to be hit with all of these regulations that will not either be beneficial to us, or to us, or cost us more money to meet their requirements and their regulations. We already see this in the fact that the state has decided to lower the, the threshold for parts per billions on, on chromium 6, thereby causing us a potential $40 to $50 million additional cost to treat our water, in addition to the water rates that we just imposed upon our residents. So, you know, we are looking very closely at this stuff. We're making sure that our interests are being represented, which means the interest of representative, of the rate payers is, is being represented. And it was good stuff. And I got to say, as much as the, the agendas and the different sessions were beneficial, I really did enjoy the opportunity to spend some time with my colleagues. We're all very busy people. We come here and have these kinds of meetings, but we very rarely have opportunities to spend with each other afterwards, and it was a very valuable experience for me to have time with my colleagues. And, and we'll be going to the ICSE next week, the mayor and myself, and the city manager, Mariano, and Daniel Arviza will be going up there. I'm very excited about the ICSE conference. Having attended them back in the 90s with another community that I represented, I remember how hard it was to, to just have people to, to take meetings with you, to discuss your city, to discuss the potential for retail development. And, but we still went out there every year and we tried it. Last year, just by a fluke, I was able to take then-Vice Mayor Wilson's place, and not having been there since the late 90s, I was impressed even last year at the amount of interest that was in buzz already in the city of Indio. And what I really appreciate is the efforts that we've taken, both with our hiring of the consultant retails, global retail strategies, and preparing ourselves, not just with a, a lot of fluff and a lot of fancy pictures, but with data and statistics and information that's going to be important for these people who are looking to develop. So this council and the staff has taken very proactive steps in, in, in preparing itself to take advantage of the next wave of retail development, and is being very diligent with the, with the cooperation of the public also, because one of the things I appreciate about this community is we do reach out to our public, whether it's tiered rate increases for our water or planning for our Better Neighborhoods programs. Our community is engaged, and our staff engages our community, and because of that, we have buy-in from the community, but I think we have a, a better product in the end is because everybody's on the same page, so. Looking forward to that, Mr. Mayor, and again, appreciation to the staff for all their hard work in preparing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lupi, do you have?
I forgot something.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to emphasize, because we just came out of the budget study session, and I've mentioned this before, that we need to, when it comes to the animal situation in our community, we need to set aside funds for outreach. It's very important, and given our experiences over these past year, I think it's time that we, as a council, let our staff know that next time we have a budget discussion, we really need to talk about outreach for the animal, just the shift, the change that the city made.
Sure.
So that our community is prepared and they understand the process.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great suggestion. Thank you, Mayor Protem Torres. I've only got a couple of items. Yes, the council did go to UAWA. It's imperative that this council, that's also the governing body of our Water Authority, comes up to speed on all water issues that we're facing, drought and other water opportunities that we're up to speed and understand what the impacts are statewide and on the city of Indio. As I say in all of my talks before groups or people, this is by far the hardest-working city council that I've served with in my 17 years. Each one of us are out there working, engaged, and it's, it's an honor to work with them. This is a great council. The conference with Aqua, I attended most of the sessions that dealt with the impact to our recycled water project that we're involved with, with our JPA, with Valley Sanitary District. We're going to take tertiary water, recycle it, and utilize it for irrigation and those types of uses to take the impact off our groundwater and our drinking water and use an alternate source. So the sessions I went to were mainly dealing with those issues and the funding sources dealing with those issues as such. Otherwise, I gone last week, and as the Mayor Protem said, we're leaving next week to the, it's called RECON. It's the largest real estate retail conference in the world, and hopefully bring back some more good news to growth in the city of Indio and new business opportunities. So thank you, and I'll end with that. Move on to item A, appointment to Community Service Commission. That's my appointment, and I'm going to ask that it's extended, since we have had no response as of yet. Okay? What's that?
Not John Doyle's, right?
No. You said that we had no responses.
Oh, no, he was the only one.
Okay.
I thought you asked other than him.
No, 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 no. I didn't know that. Let's extend it one more time, and then 30 days, and we'll bring it back June 4th. Actually, that's less than 30 days, but.
Three weeks.
We'll bring it back June 4th. Move on, city manager reports and information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item to report on, and that is that we're planning a further direction from you and the city, the full city council. We're planning a town hall meeting, scheduling it for May 29th. That's two weeks from today, and I understand you all have very busy schedules and maybe not all of you will be able to attend, but this is one of at least three town hall meetings that we're going to be having in the next few months. But this one will be, we're actually finalizing it now, the 29th of May. It'll be at the COD Satellite Campus right here in our downtown, and it'll be at 6:00 PM. So there, we'll have more outreach, more press release, and try to get the public out, to come out and listen. It'll be a regularly noted, or it'll be like a regular council meeting, because all of you, or most of you, will be there. But it'll be an opportunity for the community to, to hear you, from you, as to what's going on, all the, the great projects that are underway, and to answer their questions that they may have at that, at that event. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And again, just for the community's benefit, I won't be able to participate, because my son will be having surgery on that day, but I'm sure it'll go well.
We'll be thinking about you and your son. Move on to, I have no Youth Advisory Council to excuse, but we'll move on to public comment. This time set aside for public comment on any matter not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, limit your comments to three minutes, and submit the form to the city clerk. I have one before me, Ms. Lynda Beal.
Good evening to our mayor and council. I'm Lynda Beal. I just have some things here I want to be thankful for, for our city. This was something that was noted by some of my neighborhood watch people, that the lights weren't working right at our museum, and so we checked it out and did call over to the city yard, let the police know about it too, and that has been fixed. Some of the lights were off at our museum, and that's been taken care of. Called also Paul Stama with our city yard, and the crew got out there, took care of it right away. I was really happy about that. Also want to thank our graffiti, excuse me, our graffiti team for all that they do, and our Indio Police Department. Our neighborhood watch programs really work. there, took care of it right away. I was really happy about that. Also want to thank our graffiti, excuse me, our graffiti team for all that they do, and our Indio Police Department. Our neighborhood watch programs really work. When I call, they come. Even I have some strange things. I found a strange pipe thing one time leaning against the city hall, and I called because I thought it could be bad, but it was determined to be nothing. It was just somebody's old interesting cane that they had made. I found a bag of white substance, and it turned just out to be sugar. It wasn't anything bad. But I have called, and I, there was a car that stayed overnight in front of my house, and it was a stolen car. The police came, and they took care of that. So, and it was undisturbed. They came, you know, they got it, and people were, they got back their car, and it hadn't been stripped or anything. Also, I saw somebody sleeping in a truck one night across from my house, and I called because I didn't think that was, looked kind of strange. And apparently it was somebody. They did have a warrant out for their arrest. So, neighborhood watch does really work. I really support it, and it's just really a good thing. I want to thank our police department for all they, all they do for us. Also, we are, I am thankful for my pets that I have. Did anybody see that thing on that cat that saved that child from that dog that went after? I guess that was a cat that really adopted that family. And amazing. I just, you know, was amazed. Our animals do love us. We do need to take care of them.
Give them sixty seconds.
Okay, thank you. I had a stray cat that I, or she adopted me, I guess, my Golda, and she protected me against a scorpion. There was a scorpion in the house, and she stood in front of it, wouldn't let me go any further, and you know, made a fuss about it until I discovered it was a scorpion. So, our animals do look after, after us. Our dogs and our cats are just invaluable to us. So, we really need to take care of them, help people in our city, take care of their animals. Last city council meeting, after I went home, we went to put out the trash. My husband heard a strange noise. Somebody had dumped a little puppy in my yard. And it was just adorable. But I don't know what the situation was, that they couldn't take care of it, or they got a citation, or, you know, I have no idea. But I did get hold of some people that are interested in helping with animals, like him, Hardy, and this little puppy will have a home. There's several people that do want it. And just be sure to vote on June third. Your vote counts. Sam Torres should know that. He won by a few votes. Your vote counts. So, don't, you know, don't forget to vote on June third. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. I have no more requests to speak, so I'll move on to public comment for agenda items. Again, this is the time set aside for public comment on matters appearing on the agenda. I have no requests to speak. Are there any that wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And I will, city council, you have any items you wish to pull?
I don't.
I'd like to move the consent counter as is.
And I'll second that.
Comment?
Ms. Ramos Watson?
Oh, just a comment on item L. Animal Control Bodies, we're referring to dog crates.
Huh?
I just wanted a point of clarification. On item L, when we refer to animal control bodies, we're not-
Truck bodies.
Truck bodies.
We're referring to vehicle truck bodies.
Personnel.
And not animals.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Elaine Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Lupi Ramos Watson?
Aye with a dissension on C.
Mayor Protim, Sam Torres? Mayor Michael Wilson?
Aye. Consent calendar passed unanimous with, on item C, Councilwoman Lupi Ramos Watson voting no.
We will move on to public hearing. Item five, authorization to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated plan, annual action plan, and other required documents to continue as a community development block grant entitlement city. Mr. Agiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Jesus Gomez that will provide us with a brief presentation, and we have our consultant here as well. Jesus?
Thank you very much. Just a few slides. I mean, I know that staff has involved the council for a few months now in various opportunities, study sessions, a public hearing. We've also involved the staff and members of the public throughout this five-month process. And so, this is the last step that is required in order for the council to approve the funding for next year, as well as all of the other documents that are required in order to continue to be an entitlement community, making the city eligible to receive community development block grant funds for the next five years. As stated in the staff report, we've prepared the various entitlement documents. They're attached as exhibits. They're pretty lengthy. There was a very long process involved in putting these together, and the Ramsey Group did a great job in helping us through this process. One of the big things of the consolidated plan preparation is to conduct a community needs assessment, where we go out into the community through community meetings, as we mentioned, public hearings, study sessions. We conducted surveys in order to determine what the community needs are, and to eventually prioritize what will be addressed during the five-year period. We've concluded that process, and we have come up with a brief summary of what the five essential types of projects and activities will be. Those activities that the city will be required to undertake in order to be in compliance with HUD. Very consistent with what we've been doing over the last five years. We've also consulted with HUD about these findings, and just want to go over these with you briefly. Public infrastructure and facility improvements, and obviously, those are streets, sidewalks, public facilities, such as, I know in the past, we've assisted the Boys and Girls Club as an example. There's other agencies that we may be able to assist during the five-year period. At this point, nothing specific on what exactly we'll be undertaking for the five-year period, but these are just general topics. Economic development, job creation, and job retention type programs. Again, not very specific, just general and broad. So, CDVG gives the city a lot of flexibility in implementing various programs to address those needs. Public services, homeless services is once again one of those high priority needs, as was identified in the process. Fair and affordable housing programs, again, that's something that we've been funding over the last five years, in particular, fair housing services that's required by HUD. You know, affordable housing came up during the five-year process. We did not use CDVG funds to fund that. We had other sources of funding. What we have found, though, that their needs still exist. So, CDVG, and as you may remember, just at the last council meeting, the council approved an agreement with the county to participate in the home consortium. That will be part of the things that, funding that would be able to help the city address some of the affordable housing needs. So, we're doing other things, other, using other resources to address our local needs. And then energy efficiency programs, those types of programs make housing more affordable to the community. What we have is a recommendation, and I know that the council provided input along the way, as to what types of programs and activities to fund, and this is in the staff report, of what staff's recommendation is for the next fiscal year. This is part of the city's annual action plan, and that's something that's adopted every year by the council. And here is a summary of those activities. Very similar to last year's funding, with the exception of the Boys and Girls Club Rehab. That's a phase two of the, proposed phase two of the rehab project there at that facility. And staff is making this recommendation after consulting with the council. There was discussion regarding the Boys and Girls Club initial request to fund that development in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and there was discussion with the council. We subsequently met with the Boys and Girls Club, and they revised a request indicating that fifty thousand would be an acceptable amount of funding that would allow them to proceed with the development or the rehab, and they felt that they could come up with the remaining amount through other sources. Next year's funding, eight hundred seventy thousand dollars, fifteen percent roughly, going to public services and administration. And this is a public hearing, one of the required hearings, and so, that concludes my presentation at this point.
Are there questions of Jesus at this point? Ms. Watson?
Jesus, how does this compare to funding for the prior action plan? It seems that the percentage that we're putting toward the fifteen percent cap categories has reduced significantly.
Well, we received less funding overall. If you compare the actual proposed funding here, the right-hand column, to last year's, that's remained the same. I think right now it's at fourteen percent. You know, last year was about fourteen percent. The public facility improvement of fifty thousand is really reducing the Better Neighborhoods Program funding, not the nonprofits.
Yeah, but it just seems like it's so much less. How much did we contribute to Find Martha's in Coachella last year?
Those amounts.
Oh, this same amount? Wow, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor Protim?
On the allocations, I would actually have preferred to maybe switch the amounts with Martha's Village and the Find Food Bank services, and I'll give a reasoning for that. You know, it seems like you're picking on one and rewarding another. But when I, as I survey and my personal observations of the needs within my community, Find Food Bank does serve a large swath of the valley, all the way to Blythe, down to the Salt and Sea and Desert Hot Springs, of course, our community. I seem to see that their services are being resourced more amongst my community. I go to the senior center, for example, and they go down there, I think it's twice a month, and I know that those seniors that are lined up to receive that benefit are seniors from my community. And I just think that that impact would be felt more beneficial within my community. Now, Martha's Village and Kitchen meets a tremendous need in our community for a portion of that homeless community. But I also see the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission also doing similar, but even beyond that, in that the rescue mission provides needed housing, overnight housing, whereas Martha's isn't doing that. And the other thing I find with the rescue mission, I feel that they're better equipped to help people transition out of poverty, out of homelessness, into productive life, where, and these are just my experiences, my observations. Martha's Village and Kitchen seems to help feed the homeless population. That has become a bane to many of our neighborhoods, because once those homeless receive services at Martha's Village, they remained right there in that same community. And then they wandered down to 111. So, you see, when I see the rescue mission, I see a programmed approach of trying to help get people out of, like I said, the situation into productivity, whereas Martha's Village, in my view, really exasperates our problem of homelessness. I mean, I'm not saying they don't help people. I'm just saying it also seems to be one of those crutches that enables the homeless to stay here and within the community.
I think you need to visit Martha's, because that's not what they do. They do the same thing CV Rescue Mission does, exactly the same thing. So, I think you need to go visit Martha's Village.
And I appreciate that. Again, that's my qualifying, saying, you know, this is not, I didn't do no statistical analysis, and I certainly haven't done any surveys, but of being in my community and watching the services as they're provided. Again, and I hear my council colleagues, and we're spending lots of money on police services and code enforcement to fight the blight of homelessness. I want to deal with the homeless issue. What I don't want to do is create havens where the homeless just come here, congregate, and then we have to live with all of the problems. Anyways, those are my comments. And like I said, the food bank I feel would be, the food bank I feel actually puts food on the table of residents of my community, along with people throughout the valley. And then one last comment, I mean, a question I do have, in your, in the previous slide, if you can bring it back, yeah, the five essential types of projects and activities. One of the items I've been very interested in, and I would like to see, maybe start implementing here in the next couple of years, I've not pushed for it too much, only because I know how strained our resources are, and how overworked our staff has been because of all the cutbacks and the economy. But now, as we're coming out of this recession, and we start to see more opportunities, I would like to see is the second bullet point, economic development programs, job creation and retention programs. I would like to look at the potential over this next year of creating a program here in the city of Indio that would allow for some job training, specifically around the small farm concept. We had a presentation about nine months ago. A gentleman did a really excellent presentation, talking about this whole move towards smaller farms, specialty farms, who provide specialty services like to restaurants, the whole farm-to-table type of thing. There seems to be a resurgence there. In fact, in Monterey, there was, one of the sessions talked about that. I see that as an opportunity not only to create economic opportunity for maybe some of these small farmers who'd like to take a stab at this, but do some urban farming here in this community that would be complemented with a possible JTPA funding from the county and from the county office of education. So, what we're able to do is take at-risk youth in our schools and put them to work in this particular agricultural use, and maybe utilizing some money from this activity. And I would like to know is, could we probe them in into future years, or are we locked into this five-year program where we couldn't, say, break off that fifty thousand dollars that we're giving to, donating to the Boys and Girls Club next year, if it's available? Maybe that would be a potential source of funding, again, to complement all these other types of funding from the county and from the school districts. Is that a possibility?
Possibility.
Okay. Well, then we'll talk about that later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Jesus, for your presentation. And to piggyback kind of off what Sam does, I mean, obviously, Martha's Village, we have the Quality of Life Team now coming out, Martha's Village, and the CV Rescue Mission is, you know, we get credit for that against the other organizations that are paying into Roy's and everything else. That is our funneling of our obligation that we've agreed to do for the homeless population. But whatever we're doing is not working, and I do agree with Sam on a couple of items. We really need to start looking into a quality, not only a Quality of Life Team, but also what we can do to work with them as either a homeless group, committee or that, to try and find some of the services, working with some of the other assets and resources we have, including mental health, including CET, which trains individuals into other kinds of opportunities, the new college campus. I think there's opportunities that we can have, that we can utilize some of this funding to look at and hold them responsible to make sure that not only are they putting that funding towards operational expenses and stuff, but what is the clarification of what kind of money and response we're getting out of what we're giving them? What bang for the buck are we coming back, and what do we expect them to do? Not only just feed them, and as time goes on, ship them out the door to find something. Can we put them in a program or an opportunity to help in some way to start getting some skills? So, I think we need to hold whoever we're utilizing this CBG money to make sure that it's being utilized to the best of its ability. So, I think there's an opportunity, obviously, from the homeless population, from Ms. Holmes and other people have discussed, what we're doing is not working. So, we need to come up with another plan. This is an opportunity to have the funding that we can do towards working towards obligations, not just helping out the organizations through the fifteen percent, but can we utilize some of that other money to start training people and doing stuff that can, then maybe put them on the right path through either education or vocational training and workforce. So, I think we have great opportunities. Indio's only going to get bigger. It's only going to get brighter, especially with the college campus and that. How do we work this money to make it more benefit the community as a whole, instead of just sending out forty-two thousand dollars, knowing that we're helping them? But in the long run, are we really helping them, or are we just enabling them to be able to continue to do what they're doing? Somewhere along the line, we've got to take a stand on something. And some of them might need help. They're veterans. We could get help for veterans. Then some of them might need to get back to get their GED. Some of them might, like Sam said, work and the other stuff. We've got to start getting creative to help in these people that are in need of help and want help to get the help they need. And I'm sure OLPH and other organizations would help us too, if we come up with the right plan. So, I think we need to slowly start looking outside the box, and this is a great opportunity to do stuff. The Better Neighborhoods programs, I've seen what you guys have done in these areas that are in desperate need of help. But I think if we really do this, instead of throwing this up on the board up here, let's come up with some real good solutions that maybe can start creating and helping people in the long run. So, that's my two cents on it. Thank you.
I think maybe we, everybody needs to visit Martha's Village and Kitchen again.
I think they're doing good work. I'm not against it.
No, no, but the comments you made are totally offline and not even insightful as to what it is that they truly do. You know, the reality is forty-two thousand dollars is nothing.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't even pay for a program, wouldn't even pay for a GED program. The tenants and the residents of Martha's Village and CV Rescue Mission are there because they've fallen- they've fallen upon hard times, and they're looking for assistance to get back on their feet. They're not the homeless individuals that we see on the street. They're families, they're children, they're teenagers, they're complete individuals that have just fallen victim to hard times, and they're there at Martha's and CV Rescue, because they're the only two facilities in the East Valley that have comprehensive programs. So, you know, if that's not the same perception that you have of these two facilities, and maybe you need to visit them again, but the $42,000, it's nothing. It's a drop in the bucket. All we're doing is helping them fulfill this charge, this mission, this vision that they have, to help individuals get back on their feet. And it comes down to a philosophical difference. You know, some of us believe that we can end homelessness by just feeding everyone, and others of us have studied it long enough that we know in order for someone to be self-sufficient and on their own, you have to teach them how to grow their own produce, to fish their own fish, and to become self-sufficient. You don't just keep feeding them every day, which is Find Food Bank's mission. So, you know, as the chairman of the homeless committee for the whole region, this is something that we've studied over the last 10 years. We've studied other models, for example, in San Diego, Father Joe, who is, you know, the father of Martha's Village and Kitchen, helped us realize what the best path was to end homelessness, and he gave us that model so that we could bring it here to the Coachella Valley. And the model is the exact model that we are currently funding, and all the other Coachella Valley cities are funding over on the other side of the valley. So, I think we've addressed this from a research perspective long ago, and that we've come up with the best solution, given the limited resources that we have. So, I'd really hate to see us change gears in the middle of a 10-year plan when we already have established a goal that this is the way that we're going to help end the homeless situation in the Coachella Valley.
Lupi, if you remember, when Martha's Village came to be, the longer-range plan was to build transitional housing out there at the old drive-in on their property, and I think ultimately, that goal should still be a goal of ours to look for transitional housing project out there and funding that we can move somebody that's fallen on hard times from a temporary quarters to getting back on their feet, to transitional housing, to a successful job, and back on, back out into society. And that was the original model, and I still think it bodes well.
It is the best model. We just can't raise enough funds.
What's happened is this turn in the economy has sucked all the funding out of everybody. So, personally, I'm not in favor of changing what the recommendations are. When more funding comes available, I think we can then start to be comprehensive on how we do things, but the model we have with the Better Neighborhoods program and the public service donations that we give are too small, really, to impact anything other than putting a roof over their head. So, Ms. Holmes?
I'll make my comments a little bit shorter. First of all, I think what Martha's Village and the Rescue Mission do to really help people out of hard times and give them, give them direction and really help them, move them forward, are just very successful, and I very, very much support that. I think some, something, well, the second comment I want to make is with respect to the Better Neighborhoods program. I think that's an extraordinary program. I think that helps our neighborhoods, it helps our families, it instills pride in our community. I support that 100 percent. If I had five more dollars to put into that, I would. Something, as we talk about the homeless, that people, I have not heard anybody address up here on that dais, and the chief, the chief will tell you, because I sit on the phone with him a lot, are the chronic homeless. I sit, I am a business owner, and I watched the chief and his staff put people on a bus to the Salvation Army to give them all the skills and shelter and tools, and they get on and they come back to sleep in front of our businesses. They impact our businesses. What we also need to consider addressing, if we're going to talk about homeless or the chronic homelessness, homeless issues where they don't want help and where they're affecting the success of our business community. Again, I'm going to circle back around. I applaud, I'm very, very supportive of Martha's and the Rescue Mission and the Better Neighborhoods program. I'd like to see that component intact. Thank you.
And may I, at no time did I say that it wasn't. What I'm saying is I think we need to look outside the box on some of the other issues that are going. Obviously, we need more transitional housing. What are we doing about it? That's what I'm trying to get at. What are we doing to the chronicle homeless that don't have a place besides one of Martha's? And I've been many times to Martha's Village and many times to CV Rescue Mission, and I applaud their work, but there is other issues at hand, and how do we utilize this money or other money to come forward to get to the next step? Because what we're doing is putting money in it, and we're helping, and as Lupi says, it's a drop in the bucket. So, are we going to continue to drop it in the bucket, or as Ms. Holmes says, there's other people out there, how do we get them to get help other than putting them on the bus? We start to need to look, and as this community grows, and we will always have homeless issues in anywhere, but we're going to have more and more, because we provide most of the service. We, as you know, we've taken the blunt of the burden of providing homeless services to this Coachella Valley for many, many years, till Roy's came along, and still many, many years, because Roy's handles about 80 or 90 people. So, we have blown the burden, but how do we help those other people? And I think there's services out there that we haven't tapped into, I think we could do more with what we have, and that's trying to get other help, people and other people to help us. That's what I was getting at. But Martha's Village and the Rescue Mission, Find Food Bank, and the Better Neighborhoods, like I said, Scott Trujillo and all of you, Jesus and your group, have done an excellent job of revamping those neighborhoods. We see it every day. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I agree with those comments. I think right now, the problem is, is every dollar we take out of what's been programmed, and it's the same numbers that's in this program, takes another person out of a roof over their head and a place to stay, and puts them on the street to then go to Miles Avenue and sleep on the street. So, that there lies the problem, and I don't have the answers. I do know what we've done, and what we're doing is extremely helpful, and I think our best, the best answer is, is hopefully this economy turns around enough to where we can start doing things and looking at the transitional housing and these other things to make a bigger impact, but until we get to that point, unless there's some other recommendations or other programs that come forward, there's not much, there's not much else out there. So, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I have no request to speak on this item. Are there any in the audience that wish to speak on our consolidated plan? There are no offers to speak, so I'll close the public hearing, and I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a recommended motion after all of our consideration and discussion, which I value and I appreciate everybody's opinion, but I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated plan, annual action plan for fiscal year 1415, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and citizen participation plan. Authorize the city manager to execute all related documents and certifications, and authorize the city manager to implement and manage the CDBG program.
A second to motion.
I have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Holmes?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramos Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye. Item carries unanimously, 5-0. We will adjourn the regular city council meeting, and I'll call to order the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Indio. Ask for roll call.
Board member Lane Holmes?
Present.
Board member Glenn Miller?
Present.
Board member Lupa Ramos Watson?
Present.
Vice Chairman Sam Torres?
Present.
Chairman Michael Wilson?
Present. We'll move to public comment. This is the time set aside for public comment. If you wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form and submit it to the city clerk, and you'll be limited to three minutes. I have one request to speak. Ms. Lynda Beal?
Something else I wanted to bring up. Good evening again to our mayor and our city council. I'm Lynda Beal. Something I've seen that's really important in a lot of communities is our community gardens, and community gardens in schools, with the kids that are growing things, growing their own gardens for better health for the children and seniors and everything. The senior center has a garden. Some of the senior housing places have gardens. Very important. I was at a health meeting, and the nurse said, "This is the first generation that their parents are going to outlive them. They're going to outlive the children because of health concerns." If we can show children how to grow things, the things they grow are good to eat, I think it would just be really important to our community. I watch a program, FNX, First Nations Experience. They do have a lot of exercise programs. They show you how to do gardens. They show schoolchildren doing gardens, seniors doing gardens, seniors instructing children to do gardens, elders in the different tribes instructing people how to do gardens. And a lot of the Native Americans had some really basic, good health programs that they did, that they ate. If they can, we can go back to some of those, growing your own things, the corn, they're called three sisters, the corn and the squash and the beans. We can show children these things, they grow themselves, they've shown in these programs, the children grow these at school, and then they introduce them to their parents, their grandparents. It's a good thing all the way around for children, their parents, their grandparents to get, growing these things and seeing how good they taste and how fun it is to grow something. I just think this is something, you know, we need to really be interested in, get a community garden going in Indio. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Great idea.
Move to item one, award contract amount of $99,870 to Golden Valley Construction for the construction of a sewer lateral to service successor agency-owned property located 83100 Indio Boulevard. Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Daniel Arvesu will present this item.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and Board Members. Daniel Arvesu, Senior Planner. This item before you is an award of contract for successor agency property, which is currently the location of the Greyhound Bus Depot. This will provide sewer services to the Greyhound facility that currently is using temporary facilities. The sewer would originate from Gray Street and would go directly to the facility that's there now. The contract amount of $99,870 was the bid amount provided by Golden Valley Construction. The installation of the sewer line is an approved California Department of Finance, recognized obligation under line 14 of ROPS. The, we had a total of three bidders, and Golden Valley Construction came in with a bid of $99,870. Staff is recommending that the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Indio recommend to the Oversight Board, award of the sewer construction contract to Golden Valley Construction, and authorize the executive director to execute the contract. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, council. Any questions, staff?
Yeah, I do have one. I'm certain the answer is yes, but just I thought I'd ask for clarification, but the improvements to be done would be sufficient to do, fulfill the whole development of that area, right?
It will. Primarily, it's there to accommodate a new transportation center, a permanent transportation center as well, but could accommodate, for example, like a housing project on the property.
Yeah, just want to make sure.
It's a full-blown sewer line for the area.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Any other?
Oh, and one more thing. I was really glad to see that not only are we recommending approval to a local contractor, but the three contractors that did respond are all Valley businesses, and believe me, that makes my heart feel good. Thank you.
Great. I'll.
I'll make a motion. Successor agency to redevelopment agency of the city of Indio recommends that the Oversight Board, one, award sewer contract, construction contract to the Golden Valley Construction amount of $9,987, plus a $2,470 contingency, and two, authorize the executive director to execute the contract.
Second.
Have a motion second. Ask for a roll call.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can we just?
Sure.
We clarify, I think, I think the motion left at a decimal point. It's $99,870, just to, just to make sure we got that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call.
Board member Holmes?
Aye.
Board member Miller?
Aye.
Board member Ramos Watson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Torres?
Aye.
Chairman Wilson?
Aye. Item passes 5-0 unanimous. I will adjourn this meeting in memory of Michael Cohen, a member of our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, my appointment, who passed away earlier this week. Stand adjourned.